Second.
I.
In addition, I need a motion to sign. The Peters subdivision agreement.
I'll make a motion for the chair to sign the Peters subdivision on Bell Road.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let me make a motion for the minutes.
Yeah, everybody get a chance to read the minutes?
Yeah. Make a motion, we approve the minute. Twenty?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The board signed payroll and manifest. And then we have an appointment form. I didn't, I didn't see that.
I don't remember seeing it either.
For Alan Glassman, right?
Alan Glassman.
It might be back.
Squaring in tonight.
Oh, here it is.
Need a motion for that? Attempt to accept?
I think we just signed.
All sign? Is it an all sign?
Yeah, I think the only one that has is Gary.
New business. Highway diesel truck grant? Would we, we get approval on it?
For the first round approval. Still has to go before governor and council.
Okay, so this is a, this is to replace the plow truck? So that's, that's a good thing. And I had truck grant accepted, yes.
No, that, that was tabled due to the fact that the fire department was not here to explain exactly what type of tanker pumper that was on the grant. Yes, it was. That was the exact approval. And I understand that, but you're going under the assumption that it was just a tower truck. It is not just a tower truck. But that, that was what the tabled motion was for. It was not for Pittsfield's information. So, I mean, we do have members of the fire department here.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, I need to speak into the microphone.
He spent almost two years, maybe three years writing this grant. It's an opportunity we're only gonna have. It's an opportunity we're only gonna have one time. It's a time sensitive grant. If we don't move on this grant within the next fourteen days, we lose almost a half, almost a million dollars. We're never ever gonna get a grant like this again, so once we refuse a grant. I understand your concerns and I respect your concerns on how you feel about Pittsfield, everything, but this grant is for the town of Bonsted. It's to replace two fire trucks. A nineteen seventy-eight CF six hundred Mac Baker aerial scope, which is the ladder truck, which is seventy-eight, so how many years is that? Forty, forty-four years old, okay? It's also to replace a two thousand international pumper truck, which if we don't receive this grant, and we have to replace the pumper truck soon, because it's identical to the same pumper truck that sits up at TD's right now, and because of the construction of the frame, within a year or two, it's not gonna pass inspection. So this is an opportunity for us to seize the money, to get this grant, get rid of two trucks, to get one brand new truck that we're gonna have warranties up to twenty years on, including the ladder, the chassis, the transmission, the engine itself, and hydraulics. We, I mean, Sean, Sean worked very hard on this grant. It was a dream of his to get this grant. We were awarded, Senator Shaheen actually called and awarded the grant to us, and I think we're the only community in the state of New Hampshire that was awarded an aerial device grant. There were two other communities that were awarded pumper trucks. So, you know, this is very important and we, you know, take the time and talk about this so we can get this grant moved ahead, and like I said, it's time sensitive.
You know how much the town's responsible for on this?
Karen, what is the?
It's at one point one.
The grant that was submitted was for one point four. We've been awarded up to nine hundred thousand. So, the, because they will do ninety-five percent, we were looking at a maximum of around sixty thousand if it stays within that price range. If not, then there would be a little bit more from the town, but the fire rescue department, we have capital reserves. All money's ready to pay out.
Tax impact would be zero.
Right, and this, this grant is passed, it will cost the taxpayers zero money. They will have a truck for twenty-five, thirty years. And I, I, you know, I agree with Selectman Task about Pittsfield, but I can't think about Pittsfield. I have to think about the town of Bonsted right now. And I have to think this is the best thing we'll ever get for this town. Probably be the biggest piece of equipment we'll ever receive. And it's a one-time opportunity. We, we don't take action on this tonight, and then we may not have a chance, and once the thirty-day period is expired, they, they'll forfeit the grant. And, and I, I, I respect your opinion very well. I mean, you've been, been great. First of all, the truck has not been in Pittsfield every single morning for a chimney fire. Last year, the truck went to Pittsfield five times, five times for the entire year. It went to Alton, it went to New Durham, it went to Bonsted for several chimney fires in town, including the one right up here on South Bonsted Road, which we actually saved the guy's house because we put the chimney, chimney fire out in a timely manner. There's no way we could have put firemen up on the roof, on that steep roof, with a six-foot chimney, and put the fire out. I mean, if they would have made it out of the chimney chase into his walls, he probably would have lost his house. So, I, I do know it does go to Pittsfield, it goes to mutual aid. That's the agreement we have with all the towns around us. When we need mutual aid, like a John Taska fire, we had twelve different communities come here. Rochester, New Durham, Alton, Gilmington, Belmont, Loudon. That's, that's the, the agreement we all have. It's called mutual aid. Will it go to Pittsfield? I'm gonna say yes. It's gonna go to Pittsfield. If they ask for a ladder truck, we'll go. If it, if it has to go to Alton, they ask for a ladder truck, we'll go. When I need help from Alton, I need help from Pittsfield, they're always there to help us. So it's a mutual aid agreement.
It seems to me that the, the mutual aid, it being used for mutual aid is okay, but it doesn't, it doesn't mean that we're not gonna get another opportunity like this for this kind of money.
No, we will never get another opportunity like this.
What we have now is outdated and is gonna have to be replaced regardless. Maybe not the ladder truck, but pumper.
The pumper, if the pumper's replaced.
And we can't even replace a pumper for sixty thousand dollars.
No, you'll never get a fire truck for what this town will pay for it. If a pumper is needed to be replaced, it's gonna be six to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that's the price of pumpers. And that's just a basic pumper. That's just a basic, simple pumper, nothing advanced or anything like that.
It's more fuel efficient as well, Frank. It's more fuel efficient as well, I think, than the tower truck.
Yes, and, and this truck will be both a tower and a pumper. So, so we'll end up getting rid of two pieces of equipment that are aging, that are costing us repairs every single year with a new piece of equipment, and it shouldn't cost us anything for years. It's a brand-new piece of equipment. But it's at one time, when your house, or your house, or your house is on fire, or your chimney fire, and it's the middle of January, and it's ten below zero, we're trying to get a fireman up there to put the chimney weights down and put the fire up. When you have a ladder truck, that's how, that's what you use a ladder truck for. Put the guys inside, they're safe, they're efficient, we can reach ninety percent of the homes here, depending on the distance from the road and everything, and it's a more efficient way of doing it. There's a reason why they're all bucket trucks and everything in the cities.
My opinion with respect, everybody else's concern is we have two old pieces of equipment, not under any warranty. We're getting one piece of equipment that covers both of them for the long time warranty, and we're getting nine hundred thousand dollars towards a piece of equipment. Me, it's a no-brainer, and the zero tax impact.
And I think, in reality, we should move on the grant and, and getting the truck and work on if we need to. Towns in, in the future, if need be, or for something that can be discussed. But we need this piece of equipment. It's gonna replace two aging pieces.
Well, did you ever bother to contact Pittsfield at all? You haven't, have you?
Right, I mentioned to Pete, and Pete's discussion was, we have no, no plans on obtaining a ladder truck in the near future. They have a hard enough time keeping their tanker in service, which supplies water, which is very valuable to us also. And they're trying to replace the tanker, because the aging tanker they have is almost thirty years old. So he said one of his priorities is a tanker also. So, and then they're having a hard time keeping personnel, like everybody else around here. So those are his priorities, personnel and a tanker.
We the only people with a ladder truck to do the aid?
No. Durham has a ladder truck. Alton, short one, very short, aging one. Belmont has a ladder truck. Loudon has a ladder truck. The problem is, we have a fire here in Bonsted. You have to get that ladder truck in front of the building. It's no good if it's not one of the first pieces in here. So we're waiting for a Loudon ladder truck to come here, and we have other pieces all set up trying to fight the fire. You can't get the truck. We can only stretch the ladder so far. We can stretch hoses hundreds of feet. You can park a pump, but you can't stretch a ladder. It's very important. I mean, we basically, the town is basically being given almost nine hundred thousand dollars for the purchase. It will be the cheapest piece of equipment you'll ever buy in our lifetime.
The issue that I have, more than anything else, and this is not just Bonsted and Pittsfield, this is all over the northeast, all over New England. We have towns that are three, four, or five miles apart with duplicate pieces of equipment, and they, as you pointed out, are nine hundred thousand dollar pieces of equipment. One town should not be put in a position of having to shoulder that whole expense. Should be something that's shared.
I agree with you, Ed. I honestly do. But the, the thing is, this is a one-time opportunity. If, if we don't act on this tonight and take action and notify the, the grant, the, the office, we're gonna lose this. And we're never ever gonna get this opportunity back again. I mean, we were very lucky years ago, we worked, we got a tanker on a grant, and we got an engine on a grant, okay? Sean did an awesome job. He actually rewrote this grant twice. The first time it was refused, he went back to the table and spent probably a hundred hours of his time working on this grant. And this is his dream, to get this ladder truck to replace two pieces. You and I talked about reducing how many fire, fire apparatus we have. This is one of the things I said we'd, we'd work on, and this is one of the things we have. We're gonna get rid, two pieces of equipment, we're gonna get rid of. I mean, the engine alone, right now, we gotta put springs on it. I don't wanna spend fifteen hundred dollars to put springs on it. But I have to, I have to provide the town of Bonsted with another piece of equipment that has to be ready to go, not sitting there and saying, no, we're not gonna spend money. We have to. I don't wanna put more, more money into aging equipment. It's not, it's not feasible. And we could, we could all say that about, maybe Pittsfield should buy a ladder, maybe Alton should buy a ladder, maybe Durham should buy a ladder, okay? They don't have the grant. We have the grant.
They shouldn't have to buy a separate truck. We should be buying them as a, as two communities. What are you gonna do when the heavy rescue goes down?
Maybe that's, so that's a great opportunity. That's something we should discuss. After this grant's voted on, we should discuss if we want a heavy rescue. Maybe we should in the next year or two or three years, talk about that and say, you know what? Maybe we should get together with Pittsfield. But right now, we have to take action on this grant. I mean, but that idea will be brought up in the future. But right now, the rescue truck is in great shape. It's only about twelve years old. It doesn't go on a lot of calls, but it does carry a lot of very important equipment, specialized equipment when we need it. But it's in great shape, and all our equipment's in great shape except for those two pieces, the aging dinosaurs.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the grant. One second.
I know I'm gonna lose this argument. I knew it coming in. But I'm not gonna stop talking about it. I think that somebody didn't do what they were asked to do, for whatever reason, I don't know. I know Sean knew what my feelings were.
Yep.
So did you, Will. And didn't do a thing.
I understand.
Because you didn't want to. You don't want Pittsfield to own this truck. You want Bonsted to have a brand-new piece of of equipment, which is the way it's been since I was a little boy. He who has the newest fire truck is at the top of the heap. And so, all over New England, towns are competing for, gotta get a new fire truck, gotta get a new this, gotta get a new that. That's the way it's always been. It's, it's, you'll excuse the expression, it's fire department mentality. It's been that way forever, and it isn't gonna change.
I don't think that's necessarily true, Ed. A lot of things you said are true, but Rusty and I have forever promoted a regionalized system. We've talked about it for thirty years, about a regionalized system. We can't get any partners. Because you're right, everybody wants to have their toy in the sandbox. But if we're reaching out to these people and saying, you know, we need a regionalized system, and they don't wanna play, I'm not sure what we can do. The problem with Pittsfield is it's across the county line, and I'm sure we'd have to get some kind of state approval to do anything, and I just, I can't imagine the mountain of paperwork.
Maybe that's something that you need to address with Pittsfield.
I don't, I don't know if I've ever heard of multi, multi towns applying for a grant, gather.
As far as I know, a grant is given to us one town, not, not like Hampton, Thornton, Ellsworth. That's a multi jurisdictional fire department, and each try, each part of the town pays, each town pays a portion of the fire department budget. But as far as I know, the grant is given to the one town, and it's awarded to that one town. But what he is saying is, it's a concern that we should think about in the next, in the future, next three to five years. If there is a rescue truck, or there is another truck that needs to be looked at, maybe we should look at it with Pittsfield. But this time, we need to just concentrate on this one grant. Thank you for your comments. I, I value them.
I really think it's gonna be hard to, to work with Pittsfield generally, because they are.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna second Gary's motion.
Okay, I got a motion, I got a second. Any more discussion? Local vote?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes. All right, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Couple, another, couple more items. We're looking for or to establish this noise ordinance committee. And a couple individuals already on it. So there's the gentleman from Keneo Road. There's a board member on it, and I think we're looking for a couple of residents, a couple more residents from different sections of town, such as Lockley, Raid, Bonsted, maybe three, four more. And this is so that we can get something in place for the, for the town meeting.
Karen, can we put that on the website that we're interested in looking for people?
And if anybody's interested, anybody here interested in being on that board. You call Selectman's Office, extension two. Or you can email on Town Hall at MetroPass.net.
Should be lining up, you'll get to work with me.
Doesn't, doesn't, doesn't pay well, but it's a lot of fun.
That ought to do it, hint.
And then there's a full-time position at the highway department, department available. Must have a CDL B. Past criminal record. You can apply at the same. On Town Hall at MetroPass.net. Posted this, correct, already?
Right, that's it today. We got.
Birchwood.
Yeah, is. Oh, is he here yet, or no? Come on up, sir. And George?
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 What's going on?
Well, good evening. Ron Lemire, thirty-one Pine Park Drive. I'm here on behalf of Birchwood Hideaway Association, and what I wanted to talk with you tonight was about some improvements that we're looking to do for Red Oak, that's our, that's your
Yep.
steepest road that intersects with West Lock. Our board has recently approved some monies to make this improvement possible. We're looking to actually start the improvement. We're actually looking to start our improvement at Station Three Fifth. So basically, what that tells us is that three hundred and fifty feet up Red Oak is where we're gonna start a system, a swale system, with fabric and a rip route. And as we intersect with each driveway, we'll be installing culverts associated to that also. That improvement will bring us all the way to the intersection of West, West Lock Road, where we're gonna work directly with your road agent with what needs to be done at that section.
So what we're gonna do is, when these guys get started, we're gonna be there with them, and we will take the culvert out at the entrance of Red Oak, clean it or replace it if it needs to be replaced. Once that is done, then the inlet side, we're gonna run erosion stone up that side for probably thirty, forty, fifty feet to keep that material coming down clean. The outlet side will probably go another, maybe a hundred feet, possibly a little further. That way, when that water and silt and everything comes out of that pipe, it cleans it and keeps it down in the ditch line and no longer in the road.
Okay. Have you checked out this three hundred foot, fifty-foot section that they're gonna go up?
Yes.
You did? How many culverts are on that one?
On theirs?
Yeah.
There, there are presently no culverts.
Oh, really?
Exactly.
Okay.
And there is no swell.
That's the problem, huh?
Yes, so there, and there is no swell. Since my involvement with the board now two years, I've been actively trying to get this project underway. Our board is, is taking this seriously. We're, we're actually excited to be working with the town of Bonsted.
All right, that's good news.
Down to fifteen.
We will put another fifteen in if it needs it. That's a new culvert that was put in in two thousand and nineteen. I'm hoping we can just get that out and clean it and reuse that pipe. I don't see a reason why we can, as long as we're careful. And then we'll just take our water truck with a high-pressure nozzle and blow it all out and start over.
So this whole project is something that you are in favor of?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yep.
At a problem area.
It has been, yep. And they're willing to take their, their end and we'll do ours.
Is that what the minimum is, fifteen? I thought it was eighteen.
No, fifteen.
Is it?
Yep.
We appreciate the association working with us on this, because it has been a problem area for quite some time. So I appreciate you stepping up and working with the town so we can get this, so the road doesn't wash out every major rain.
Thank you very much.
That's, like I said, we are committed to work.
Okay, good. Anything on that, right?
I don't think so. Well, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
No. George, we didn't have anything else for you, right?
Oh, okay.
Stand to pave tomorrow? You'll be done tomorrow? Okay. Some of you may have heard or seen some information on social media in reference to Ice Cream Truck. What we're gonna do now, because this is not on the agenda for this meeting. Typically, we wouldn't discuss this, so what we'd like to do right now is have the chief, the chief wants to give a statement on this, so we're gonna allow him to do that. When we open it up to the public after that, we will only be collecting information. Okay, we will not be answering any questions, because we don't know. The board has not had an opportunity to talk about this at all, because it has come up quickly, Friday, I believe, is, is when things started to get rolling, and we haven't been. So, what we'd like to do is just collect information this evening, and then meet with the chief, with the board, and see if we can address some of the concerns, right? And I know that probably isn't why you're here, but that's, that's what we. Um, and I know that probably isn't why you're here, but that's, that's what we have to do at this point. Alright? So Chief, if you wanna come up?
First, I'd like to, uh, thank the board, uh, for giving me this opportunity tonight to, uh. I'd like to, uh, thank the board for giving me this opportunity tonight, uh, to clarify a few things and how the ice cream program, uh, came about. So I've, uh, written a statement, uh, typically I speak off the cuff, but I, uh, I wanted, uh, to actually kind of get all the details so that there's no information, uh, getting out there, misinformation, okay? Uh, so in August of two thousand and twenty-one, I met with my staff to see what we could do as a department to expand our community service programs. And connect with the community on all levels. And we discussed renting an ice cream truck and handing out free ice cream to the community. Although we did not have, uh, any money in the budget for such a program, uh, I discussed this with my wife about putting up, putting off our short vacation we had planned and taking this money to rent an ice cream truck to give out free ice cream to the community. My wife supported me on this, so I personally took one thousand dollars of my own money and I rented an ice cream truck from Dottie Williams. Dottie came to Barnstead with her truck. She drove the truck and allowed my officers and myself to hand out ice cream. WMR was, uh, covered the event. Uh, over the preceding weeks, many residents came to me and my staff thanking us for handing out free ice cream and gave our department lots of accolades for doing this. This event went so well, I decided to do it a second time, again with my own money. And Dottie Williams and her employee Kathy brought the truck to Barnstead while my officers handed out, uh, ice cream at the Barnstead Elementary School in October. Before hiring Dottie Williams to come to Barnstead with her ice cream truck, I had reached out to several other vendors, but none of them were willing or able to come to town with their truck. When I had initially gone to Hudson to see if I could, uh, rent an ice cream truck from this company, I saw several old trucks that were on the property that appeared to have been sitting there for quite some time, based on their condition. After seeing these trucks, I got an idea to perhaps build one for our police department and, uh, add it to our community service program since all of our other events had gone so well. Uh, Dottie Williams told me that her husband Ben is the one who builds and does all of the mechanical work on these trucks and that he may be willing to sell me one and that I should speak to him. I stopped by the shop one day and had a conversation with Ben, letting him know my intentions. Uh, Ben was very much in support of what I was trying to accomplish and even wanted to donate the old truck to the police department. Ben suggested I stop by the following week as he needed to pull it out of the woods as it had flat tires and hadn't run in many years, but he reassured me that he had been working on these trucks for a long time and would get it running. In the preceding weeks, I stopped by the shop, Ben had hooked up a chain to the truck and removed it from the wooded, uh, area behind his building. Ben had put two tires on the truck and fixed the carburetor, as well as some other small repairs. When he was done working on it, he advised me that the truck needed a new transmission. Ben continued to want to make the donation to the police department in support of the program, but I insisted that I pay him for the truck. We settled on five hundred dollars, which I paid to Ben of my own money for the nineteen seventy-five Chevy ice cream truck. Ben put the truck on his flatbed trailer, towed it to my house, suggesting, uh, a good tow company. When I was ready to have it brought to the transmission shop, I sub, I subsequently called this company and they towed the truck free of charge because they too wanted to support the Barnstead Police Department Ice Cream Program. While the truck was at the transmission shop, I searched for a fro, I searched and found a, uh, freezer for the truck. And I purchased, again, with my own money and later donated both the truck and the freezer to the town of, uh, to the town for the police department, ice cream program. After the truck was repaired at the transmission shop, it was brought to Massachusetts to get extensive auto bodywork done, uh, to which it took, uh, quite a while and many man-hours. Once the truck was mechanically sound and the body work was done. I was bringing, I was bringing the truck back to New Hampshire and stopped by Ben and Dottie's place to show them their old truck and how well it had come out. I could tell, uh, by their smiles that they were very happy to see their old truck all refurbished. At this time, Ben noticed that the truck was missing an ignition. We were using a screwdriver to start it. A set of exterior mirrors, a yellow beacon light, hubcaps, a bell, a music box, and directional lens covers, as well as a serving shelf and serving window. Ben said that he had all these things and asked me to stop by the following day. He would install all of this for me free of charge. I did go to the shop and as promised, Ben installed all of the equipment, rewired the truck for free of, on his own time. Dottie was there and also gave me ice cream decals for, uh, the truck, uh, making the truck complete minus the graphics and lettering. Since the inception of the Barnstead Police Ice Cream Program, many citizens and businesses, both in our community and outside of our community, have come forward to support this program and have given monetary donations to keep the program running. The program has had a zero impact on tax dollars. Additionally, already, we have done two events, giving hundreds of ice cream, free ice cream at the veterans event at the B, uh, Barnstead Elementary School and at TL Store Scout Reservations for a Barnstead Child's Fundraising. To be clear, Ben Ellis has never, uh, been to any of our ice cream events. And in fact, he has never been to Barnstead as, uh, he and his wife, uh, got lost on the night of the recognition event, which made them late for the meeting. Uh, Ben and Dottie have been nothing but kind and generous to the police department and the town of Barnstead, completely supporting the Barnstead Police Department Ice Cream Program. I personally purchased thank you plaques to recognize the people who spent long hours working on, on and building the truck, donating their time, materials, and resources. I invited Ben Ellis and Dottie Williams to Barnstead to thank the two of them for everything they did to help the ice cream truck program possible, just as I did that night with the other two gentlemen who helped build the ice cream truck. Unequivocally, unequivocally, neither I nor any Board of Selecting member knew of Ben's past. He gave me no reason to become suspicious of him and I did not, nor would I run a criminal record check on him as this is illegal under Criminal Justice Information Systems Guidelines and would constitute a criminal offense. In closing, I'd like to thank everyone for their, uh, continued support to the valuable program in partnering with us to make the program the success it has been. As we move forward, continue to grow and serve the community with honor, dignity, and respect. Chief Paul Murray.
Alright, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, uh. Did you have any department head information you wanted to share? Okay. So I'll go ahead and open public input. Up at five, I guess.
Five forty-nine.
Just five forty-nine. Public input's open. If you'd like to come up and speak, just give you, please give us your name.
I'm the McMenamin Trudell. Um, I wanna first look over at you because. You and I have had a roundabout, have never fully met, so I wanna make sure that we see each other's faces. One of the disappointing things right now, um, that I didn't hear you say was to recognize why people are upset about what occurred. And not.
Okay, Clint. Could you address the board too, please?
Well, I wanna make sure that he hears what I'm saying.
He can hear you.
So, uh, that's very disappointing that, um, I just heard a lot about what the chief has done and what he's paid for and I, 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 but not once did I hear. Some sort of recognition to the public on why people are upset. As far as looking at someone's criminal record, that's obviously true. You, you can't go into, he can't go into his systems and just matter-of-factly look somebody up. But the public here did so by Googling his name and getting that information. So it's not that hard to do. As the chief of police, I would think that it would be important in any transaction that we do, that we do look at who we're dealing with. Because it might not be the money that you've given him, but people in the town have given him to spend. So that's the first part of it. The second part of it is ninety-two percent of children under the age of eighteen are sexually assaulted. In the United States, over two hundred and fifty thousand children a year are assaulted. I find it totally unacceptable that we had any kind of ceremony for somebody who was not just accused, but was convicted of felonious sexual assault. And if you don't know what that is, RSA six thirty-two, look it up. It's disgusting. So the fact that our town has now had this plout over it. Whether intentional or not, it is still, it's happened. It's disgusting and it's left a lot of people feeling like, as far as the truck goes, I've heard the words creepy, disgusting, people wanna beat it down, they never wanna see it again because of what it holds. It's disgusting. So as a mother and a grandmother, if that was my child that that man assaulted. When I read comments last night about people saying, get over it, or it's not, you know, it happened, what's he supposed to be held accountable for the rest of his life? Yes, he is. Because if a man or a lady, anybody assaults a child. If it's one of my children, you can be damn straight, you'll be held accountable for the rest of your life. So as a public member of this community, I am letting the board know and the chief to know that that's why I'm upset, is because it happened. And then after hearing him speak, he didn't say one time, I understand. Just give his excuses.
Thank you, Linda.
Hi, my name is Heather Marie Brown. Uh, I am also here because I have an issue with this entire process. I appreciate the level of engagement that the police department is trying to achieve in the community. I just believe that this entire thing is a huge disaster and it never should have happened. Um. I am a mother of a child who was sexually assaulted, who the charges were for aggravated felonious sexual assault, which is child rape under the age of thirteen. That is what this man was convicted for. Alright, now, recently, I helped to raise sixteen hundred dollars for the Lebanon Main Elementary School, uh, for their music and arts program over there. It took almost a month for me to actually be able to churn the money over to the town and to the school because of the vetting process that needed to be done before any donation could be accepted by the community, especially since it totaled such a substantial amount. Sixteen hundred dollars may not be a lot to some people, but that's a lot for one person to raise in a community to donate to a school. It literally took almost a month of vetting, checking, research, looking into where the money came from, looking into what the project involved, the whole nine yards, before I could physically hand that donation over. I have worked in other communities where the process is very similar. So I'm confused because I would have expected that Barnstead would have a similar process as well. And judging by the events that have taken place, I'm guessing that there is no process in place for that. So I would honestly recommend that the board create and instate a process for this to protect the town, the community, and the resources within it from any kind of action or, or situation like this occurring. Um, you know. It, it really didn't take ve- very long to find out this information. Um, you know, and from someone who lived in the area, worked in law enforcement in the area. I, I do have difficulty believing that at some point in time, this gentleman's name did not come across his desk, across his scanner, across his radio, or anything else. Maybe he forgot, maybe he didn't. You know, the statement he gave, again, all we heard was how wonderful Ben is. I would think that after everything that has gone on for the last several days, the last thing that our police chief should be doing is trying to tell the community how wonderful a convicted child rapist is and how much good he did for the children in our community. And have absolutely no remorse in regards to the misuse of judgment in the entire situation. That is appalling to me. Have, be a little humble about the situation. If you made a mistake, if you didn't know the information, so be it. Own up to it. I'm sorry, I didn't realize this. This will push me to do a better job next time. That is what the community, one of the things that would sue the community. But we didn't get that. We're not going to get that. Instead, what we got was everything on the police department's Facebook page pulled off immediately. And, and then basically given the opinion that he was pulling it off so that he could come up with his excuse on how he was going to spin this as a positive thing, which we just saw that happen tonight. Did the town, did, did the Board of Selectmen request him to move that, remove that from the Facebook page? Did he do it on his own? Uh, he said he had also put in his own money. Was that ever reimbursed to him? Um, you know, there, did the, did the Board of Selectmen give him permission to give this award to this gentleman? Did, did the Board of Selectmen give him permission to invite this man into our town and into our community? Um, there are probably so many questions a- around the entire situation. And I'm not trying to place blame anywhere. I'm trying to bring up that this is a terrible, horrible incident that could have been avoided if the proper and necessary steps were in place to begin with to prevent this type of thing from happening. And I think probably one of the worst things is, is that if you get on, I kidding, a sex offender to own an ice cream truck company, I mean, come on now, and call it Uncle Ben's? Where he and his wife drive this truck around to parties and sell ice cream to children? How sick. I, it, how sick is that? But anyway, you know, besides all of that, like thi- this gentleman is now using a picture with our police chief on his business Facebook page has a promotional item. Did the Board of Selectmen give him permission to do that? To let his image of him in uniform be used for promotional purposes on a convicted child molester's business page? Personally, this award should be revoked. It should be demanded that that photograph and any other association with that company be removed immediately from that business page. I, I, I'm uncomfortable knowing that our police chief i- is. his picture in uniform is promoting a pedophile's business. This is, that's, that's not okay. And there shouldn't be a single person on this board that finds that okay either. Just like there shouldn't be a single person in this community that finds it to be okay. You know, I really hope that this entire thing is going to be a learning process for everybody involved and that something good and something positive will come out of it to prevent it from happening in the future. And I hope that a certain individual maybe at some point recognizes that mistakes were made and is willing to take a little humility and be humble and actually respect the individuals in the community by coming down to our level and and understanding why there is so much frustration. And and I hope that that I never ever hear him try to tell anyone how wonderful a pedophile is again. It's unacceptable.
Thank you, Ella. Anybody else would like to speak? Reference the ice cream truck?
Evening, Rick.
Good evening.
Select Board members. My name is
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Janet Levitt. And I had sent you an email, Rick, and I had previously sent an email to the board that due to technological difficulties or whatever was never responded to. So I'm just wondering, did you actually receive the email I sent?
I believe so, recently or?
I sent it on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth in reference to?
This incident. And it was actually a request for a special forum so that we could come together, not disrupt the town's business. Because you know that y'all probably have a fairly packed schedule. Okay. So I hope that is something that you all take into consideration to allow the townspeople to come together, to express their concerns. Perhaps at an hour that's a little bit more friendly to those of us who are working and don't have the ability to take time off to come to speak.
Well, I believe this is, this is one of the reasons why we're doing normally would not do, but under the circumstances of where it came and when it came, we allowed it.
Well, hopefully, this is one of those things.
We do want to know. We want to know, you know, what your concerns are, and we do want to know his side of the story, and we want to know what we can do fixing. That's the only reason why we're doing this tonight. Otherwise, this would have to be a scheduled appointment. You know, you know the routine.
Yep, well, hopefully, this is something that is such a one-off that there is no standard operating procedure for something like this.
And we felt it was important enough.
And we appreciate that, we really do. But hopefully, it is something that the board will entertain, come together and allow the townspeople at an hour that's a little bit more user-friendly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty much all that needs to be said.
My name is Liz Kelly. I have a lot of feelings about this. First of all, I just looked up, do you have any idea how many sexual predators you have between here and Barnstead?
I'm aware of them.
Here in Pittsfield? Yep. So it's not like we all might not rub elbows with one during time. First of all, I should tell you, this is coming from somebody who was molested and assaulted as a child. I was under the age of thirteen, it was a family member, so it's not like I'm not sensitive to this, because I am. However, I think in this case, it's not as much that this man was a convicted pedophile or that he didn't let the state know his address. Majority of people on social media going after this are the same group that went after our chief of police two years ago. I honestly don't think they care as much about the pedophile as they do at getting rid of our chief of police. Now, this man was convicted thirty years ago, and I can tell you from working with the state thirty years ago, records weren't always what they are today. And parents could bring charges against somebody for molesting their child if the person was over the age of twenty-one and the child was, say, fourteen. So we don't know all the ins and outs of this. So I, I, you know, I'm not saying the man is guilty, that he should get away with it. But I'm honestly not seeing why we're so upset over this. He hasn't been in contact with our children. It was over a piece of equipment. That's it. And again, I'm telling you, I have no sympathy for pedophiles or child molesters as being a victim of one. And saying that if my daughters were, the man would probably be dead today. But I'm saying we're losing sight of what this whole social media circus is about. And I still think it's about a witch hunt for our police department.
With the McQueen ventriloquist again. In just response, in response to what Liz just said. I just want to say that I, this is the first time I've ever had anything to say in regards to anything that the chief has been a part of. So I am not part of the witch hunt. I've heard about it, but I'm not a part of it. But I, I think what I just heard and what is still a concern for me is not so much the truck itself was the fact that twofold. We gave a man an award who was a pedophile from, even though it was from our chief, it sort of umbrellas us as a town. So that's a concern. And number two, I, I think to Heather's point, if there isn't something in place, there should be something in place so that people are vetted, the people that we are dealing with are vetted, so that this never happens again. So, so those are my two points. Lastly, there's a lot of people that are here, that are online, that we're weighing in, that are also victims of sexual assault. Doesn't make anybody less knowledgeable whether you are or you're not, because you can be a parent or a grandparent as well. Love children, whatever. Pedophiles are pedophiles, period. And Ben's record showed that it, he, he did not, he violated his, his court stipulations, so.
He needs to register every time he moves.
Correct, but there was an article I read today, and again, it's just an art, it's one article. But it, it was stipulating that that's not the only thing that he violated.
Okay, thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say anything? Okay. More remark? Are you there?
Hello?
Hello? Hello?
I'm sorry, I couldn't be there today because I need to take care of my mom and I'm driving home. But I I just also sent an email that I would like
Lori, we can't, we can't hear you at all.
Okay. Can I type it?
Sure.
I'm gonna type it.
Oh, what, are you driving?
I'm, I'm, my husband is. I'm gonna type it though. I'm trying to, I wanted to be here, but I have to take care of my mom, I'm gonna type.
All right, ma- maybe what you could do, Lori, is write down your concerns and and send them to us so that we can add them to our collection.
Typing in your, in your, your moderator can see my typing.
Okay, go ahead. I'll give you a couple of minutes. Lori, we, we are here to discuss a situation that rose very quickly, and we're trying to collect some information on it. Has nothing to do with anything from the past. Yes, we're not here to answer questions, we're here to collect information.
I'm sorry, can you hear me at all?
Very, very, so light.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm gonna try to speak as loud as I can. The information that I'm trying to relay right now is that I am upset that this town has allowed this man to come into our town. He has an ice cream truck business that deals with children, and if you look at the Facebook page, the posts are very suggestive. And he also owns a swingers Facebook, swingers club called the Twilight Club Twilight. I mean, there's so much wrong with this situation, and I'm just very upset about it. And if you're collecting information, I'm giving you information. And I'm sorry I can't be there in person, this was a last minute thing, and I had to take care of my mom, but I wanted to be there to give this information. I hope you can hear me.
Okay, thank you, Lori. Yes.
I, I just wanted to let Mr. Theryan know that the sex club business Mr. Ellis owns is also located next to his ice cream truck business in the same building.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Wayne Whitney. I've been to many selectmen's meetings, not all of them, but I've been to quite a few, and I can I can remember you trying to address funds coming in and out of this town and keeping track of it. And my concern is that anything that's being established in the town should come to the board for us, this is my own opinion. You know, as far as money goes, it's the same thing, we, there should be a paper trail so that people can just turn around and say, well, why did this person get this? If everything is upfront, then you can sometimes prevent things from happening. And you know, as far as people taking money out of their own pocket, how are they reimbursed? Are they reimbursed by paying off the credit card?
They're not reimbursed. You pay out of your own pocket, they don't, they don't get reimbursed. It's their money.
Didn't we just purchase some bicycles?
No.
Didn't, wasn't there a grant?
There was a grant for it, correct.
Yeah. And there was
That didn't come out of somebody's pocket.
Didn't somebody pay for other stuff upfront for us?
No, there was some concerns about I know what you're referencing, you're referencing our previous meeting.
Yeah.
When we were talking about vetting and monitoring the, the monies that were being donated to the town. That's what you're referring to, correct? And and that, all that was, was, there's, there's a lot of things sometimes like gaffes need, like U-Haul trucks, stuff like that, that, you know, we can't build directly. You know, our Amazon accounts, same thing. And the point was to make it so that anything that we can, can be billed directly and paid for directly, it gets done. That's what we're looking.
Because my, my feeling is that the board should be approached on any project that's being done before some, any apartment head goes in. Most apartment heads, they do something. And they ask you, what do you think about this, or if we're gonna get, look for a grant to run across the board. I think that would head off a lot of problems that if the board had more control, and I know these guys have a lot on your plate, and it's a big challenge to keep everybody happy. And I appreciate the board being able to give everybody a chance to talk tonight, because I know you didn't have to do this. And the town is better for it, and I would thank you.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right.
Hi, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful, this is Kate Query. I wasn't gonna say anything, but you guys know me, and how can I not say something? So, so two things, right? My recommendation directly to the select board would be after volunteering on a significant number of different kind of committees and things like that across town, I think that the different committees and organizations in town would benefit from a shared understanding and a clear understanding of what's required of volunteers or required of people. or required of people in terms of both background checks. And because that can be time-consuming and expensive, also just some basic checks on registries and things like that. And I think that that would really go a long way towards solving things. I don't, I wouldn't want to see a standard practice put in place that required everybody to bring every little thing to the select board, because frankly, I think that it ties people up and it prevents good volunteers from joining things. But I do think a clear understanding of when somebody needs to be vetted and what they need to be vetted for would be a really, really good idea. And that shouldn't just be for this situation. It should be across all the things, right? All the committees, all the things that are involved in town and public facing. And then the other thing I just wanted to say is that the ice cream truck is a good thing. I know people are upset. I share the concerns. I respect them. I respect the folks trying to do a good thing with the ice cream truck, too. When the ice cream truck was at Jackson's event, it was for my son, Jackson, this couple of weekends ago. When it was there, I saw teenagers interacting with cops in a really good way, and that's a good thing. So there's a problem here. It has a solution. We need to make way for a solution. And I really want to see the continued community building between police officers and young people, because I think that's a really good thing. Thanks, guys.
All right, thanks, Kay. Everybody here all set? Time being? All right, I'm gonna close public input at 6:22, 3? Public announcements? Apartment heads, public what? Public determines? Okay, we do. Is that under B? No. A? All right. Oh, go ahead.
And did I, just like to ask you, did anybody have any problems getting in here tonight, getting in that doorway into the hall? Because it seems, we have had a lot of issues with our audio and video, as I'm sure most of you know. We do this for the public. It does not have to be done. And a lot of people have been putting a lot of work and time and trying to get this straightened out, so it will work better for the public. But there are, once again, on social media, a lot of people that say we're trying to hide things because the video goes down or the audio goes down, and I think it's pretty shallow, considering every time we meet, there is no problem coming through that door and getting into this building. And we're not, obviously not trying to hide anything, so I'm hoping to put that to rest, but who knows? Thank you.
We are, we are definitely working on doing our not you. Make a comment. Put her on it. Want to run video on this?
Lisa Magor, I work in the office. I watched the video from the office back prior to public comment. And the only thing I'll say is, everybody just needs to be close to their mic. We never dropped signal once. About 20 plus people, 34 people. Unfortunately, it would be great, I agree with you, Gary, to have 34 more people in the audience. I just wanted to let you know that I thought it was working very well tonight. I think the only one you couldn't hear or the rest of us couldn't hear was Lori, but we could hear Kate Query well, and I think everybody else could hear you guys well. At least I could from back there. So that's, that's my observation from sitting back there. I think we've solved a lot of the problems and to only get better.
All right, thanks.
Make a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion. We go into non-public under RSA 91- A colon 3, Roman numeral 2A, which is compensation.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call on that.
Thanks, everyone, for taking the time.
Yes. Aye.
Aye. Sorry about that.